Okay, and we are live in three, two, one.
Good evening, everyone. Can we have a call target, please?
Director Asner?
Here.
Director Faulkner?
Here.
Director Goodman?
Here.
Director Petrov? Vice President Brown? President Cunio?
Here.
Pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening again, everybody. Before we get started, would someone like to make a motion to excuse Ms. Brown and Ms. Petrov? I so move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. So that all the individuals and their families. Alrighty, we have a quorum. Public comments. Before we start with public comments, there's certain rules that you must follow. Welcome to the Special School District, St. Louis County's Board of Education Business Meeting. It took 30 minutes for each Board of Education Business Meeting will be set aside to hear public comments. Board of Education values your input and thanks you for your comments. These are the guidelines that we follow. Each comment is limited to three minutes to address any item that is a legitimate part of the business of the Board. No confidential personnel-related topics are allowed. Comments are read in the artative; they are received by email. The contents of the email, the sender's name and address have been submitted to the Secretary of the Board as part of the official public record of this meeting. Amy, would you like to read the comments, please?
Sure. Okay. Comment number one is from David Hope. I am writing this comment tonight in place of giving it in person because the Board has decided it cannot hold in-person Board meetings, but can hold in-person classes. This evening, you will be discussing a plan to return South Tech to in-person classes at a very expedited rate. This plan is an effort to appease districts in the South County area of the county. I want to make sure that the Board entirely looks and evaluates all of the information in the spirit of transparency. SSD advocates for staff to be data-driven, and I am asking you to look at all of the data. You seem to be overlooking essential things. Every district that sends students to South Tech except Hancock currently has a part of their community at the highest rate of positive cases in St. Louis County. County Executive Sam Page has declared that residents should stay in groups of no more than 10 and work from home when possible to slow the spread of COVID. Yet, this Board is about to evaluate sending students back into class at a rapid pace despite schools and some of our biggest-sending districts having to close schools over positive cases. South Tech is a melting pot. We welcome students from every district in the county's South End. The potential for spread is massive and destined to happen. The original plan was to return one day a week after the new semester. This new plan has one day for one week. Then we go right into two days and return to five, full five days in the new semester. At the same time, North County, who has done better at controlling the spread according to St. Louis County numbers, will wait for any return until next semester. South Tech has already had to welcome multiple programs to our campus. We have Bridges, numerous VSP programs, Adult Ed, and the Child Care Program, all of which introduce numerous opportunities for the virus to spread. Recently, staff has heard rumors that an Adult Ed student has tested positive. However, we have no confirmation because at this point SSD is not making numbers available to even staff despite saying they will be transparent in this process. Staff is concerned because the Adult Ed students have been seen in and out and walking out of their classrooms with no mask on. They have been in the halls on their cell phones with no mask on. These are students that are supposed to be training in the medical field, and we think high school students will follow the mask rule. SSD has also said this process will involve stakeholders, and again, not one staff member was asked for any input for this plan. The plan was presented with less than 15 minutes for questions and those only via a chat on a Zoom. Again, we can't meet in person, but we can have students in the classes. Transparency seems to be just something we say, just like saying the custodial staff will properly clean our rooms. Staff is concerned, and their concern seemed to be overlooked by this Board and the administration. Staff members have presented their problems and have been met, no response from the Board, and an answer that many staff felt was not sufficient from the administration. We are asking you to consider every piece of information this evening when you discuss the tech schools' reentry. Stakeholders were not adequately consulted in the development of this plan by the administration. Please follow what SSD says and hold all stakeholders as essential parts of this process. I realize there are many different options on returning even in our buildings, but rushing into this will not solve the problem. It will potentially make it worse. SSD administration says we are all in this together, but the staff feels like it should include just as long as we don't want a voice in the process. Please give the educators in the classrooms the voice they deserve in this manner and a voice in the issues regarding their safety. After all, they are in the classroom, and this Board continues to meet via Zoom because of an out-of-control pandemic. Comment number two is from Kristin Merango. I am writing this letter to the Board to express my concerns about pushing up the start date for students within the technical high schools. Positive COVID-19 cases and deaths in our community are continuing to climb. Hospitals are nearing capacity, and healthcare workers are exhausted. If a hospital reaches capacity, that means that if you or I or anybody in the club needs medical attention for any reason, whether it be a heart attack, stroke, et cetera, they will not be able to receive care from our hospitals. Schools in our community are starting to shut back down or take steps backwards with the spread going on in their buildings. Our county executive and our lead healthcare officials are begging the public to take the steps necessary to reverse the trend we have going on in our community so that we may save lives. Expediting the return plan to the technical high schools, given the circumstances in our community, would be contributing to the spread in our community. We have students that come from several schools in St. Louis County, and we bring them together in one building. Several of our classrooms don't have the ability to socially distance properly and have no ventilation. I hope the Board takes this into consideration tonight when discussing the return of students to the technical high schools. Our goal is to keep our students and their families, coworkers, and our families safe during this incredibly challenging time in our lives while doing our best to provide quality education to the students. Comment number three. Dear Board members, my name is Charlotte Annaberry. I am an SSD parent educator working in the Parkway School District. I, like so many staff, have been affected by COVID-19 virus scenario. On November 4th, I woke up with headache and some mild congestion. Due to the health screening tool at Parkway put forth, I was required to stay home. After a telehealth appointment, I was advised to get tested, received a negative result, but in my case, I still have more steps to take. I would like to address several concerns for myself and my coworkers. First, the lack of knowledge and consistency of procedures, of when to stay home, the ability to work virtually, what the FFCRA is and how it works, and requirements for returning to work. Secondly, because of how difficult and time-consuming the process is, I was fortunate to be well enough to navigate through each step, but I fear for those whom are not well enough to do so. Thirdly, it seems that week-to-week requirements are changing. I fear that most will find the process so difficult and the possibility of taking all their PTO time, they will disregard the health screening tools or symptoms and choose to come to work sick and possibly infect others. I ask that further conversations will take place to take on a more proactive approach on educating all staff, create clear, consistent guidelines, requirements as known by all decision-makers, and all requirements can be attainable in a timely manner. I would also like to thank Melissa Geiger for answering my phone calls and emails. Comment number four is from Susan Givens. While I can empathize with parents and families for the challenges associated with remote learning, I believe it is unfathomable to even consider reopening schools given the most recent data regarding COVID. Dr. Garcia, who is the head of the St. Louis Metropolitan Task Force, has described the latest statistics as beyond frightening. The Missouri death rate set a new record in October of 618 deaths. The COVID risk level for St. Louis County as of November 9th is listed as active or imminent outbreak. This pandemic is extremely unfortunate for everyone in the community, but school districts have no culpability in this matter. School districts have to respond to the data and make decisions that will keep the most people safe. Is even one death too many? If the infection rate at South Tech is 2% to 3%, is this really an acceptable percentage to move forward? 2% of 2,000 is 40. I'm not a doctor, and I am not a school board member in a difficult position trying to navigate through the circumstances and pressures of this school year. I'm a teacher, and I don't want to be one of the 40. I don't want any of my students to be one of the 40. It is just not worth the risk to the health and lives of students, teachers, staff, school bus drivers, et cetera. The risks far outweigh any benefit of reopening a school and hoping for the best outcome. Not one place has had success preventing the virus. Not Major League Baseball, National Football League, or even the White House. And I am certain the protocols used in these places are above and beyond what we have here to protect us. I am urging the Board to make the right decision based on science and not parental pressure. It is everyone's responsibility in our community to adhere to safety protocols, and hopefully, this will result in a safer environment to consider reopening our schools. Everyone in the community should focus their energy on better efforts to control the spread of this deadly virus instead of admonishing a school district for the consequences of this pandemic. Okay, and comment number five, our last comment this evening, is from Suzanne Kirby. I would like to express my concern that you are considering the reentry of students into South Tech High School in December 2020. The current plan is for students to re-enter South Tech on January 19, 2021, for one day a week. I am confused as to why we are even discussing a change to our current plan. My reasons for confusion are as follows. The current situation with COVID infection rates in St. Louis County and cities is at a critical level. Hospitals are being overwhelmed with cases, which means those seeking medical care for other things other than COVID are also at risk. Soon, hospitals may stop doing elective procedures as well if this trend continues. The St. Louis County Executive, Dr. Sam Page, has recommended that those who can work from home should do so. At this time, South Tech teachers are being required to work from school. Even this level of exposure is recommended. I live in Jefferson County. Two school districts in the county have gone to all virtual due to infection rates exploding. If these schools, which have met in person with students, can't contain the virus, why would South Tech? Students from all over South St. Louis County come to South Tech. Therefore, spread within school district boundaries does not contain because of the very nature of tech. Perhaps one school could shut down for two weeks and theoretically contain spread. But if students from that school also have been at South Tech, the potential for spread to other districts becomes a vector in community infection. Public school plays a huge role in our community, and one of those roles is being part of the public health team. Keeping students, teachers, staff, and all of their loved ones safe by keeping them at home is of high importance. We are so lucky to live in a time of technology where emails like this can be sent and read to the Board. Zoom meetings can occur where we can see each other's faces and hear each other's voices. Pictures can be sent with a touch of a button. I'm sure my grandmother would have liked to have had that technology back in 1980 when she lost her younger brother to the flu epidemic. That's it.
Alrighty, thank you for the comments.
I could just make a quick comment.
Yes.
There seems to be a misconception about how we are all participating. I just wanted to quickly address that. We are not all meeting from different locations via Zoom. We are in one room in person. There's a few exceptions.
Yes, five board members, the superintendent, the cabinet.
There are 15 people in the room right now, and this is a smaller room. I just wanted to address that.
Also wanted to-
I've heard that from a few public comments.
Thank you. And I also wanted to be known that we are all socially distancing, and we are all put masks. So we are all taking the proper clothes. Alright. Thank you. Someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
Go move.
Just a second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Alright, technical school review.
Alright, we have Mr. Anderson here to discuss. We sent to the Board a modified reopening of our technical school. This is not the agenda because at the last Board meeting, it was requested from the Board to revisit the plan that we originally had voted on in October 13th.
So President Cunio, Vice President Brown, Board Directors, Dr. Keenan. I'm Kevin Anard, Executive Director, Rear Technical Education and College in Corrinius. And as Dr. Keenan said, I'm going to be giving you a presentation, giving an overview of reopening proposal for the technical high schools based off the feedback from the last Board meeting. So a quick overview of what we're going to be talking about. Going to touch on a review of the data as well as the stakeholder feedback, so from families, from students. Talk about revised reopening proposal based off the feedback from the last Board meeting. Some important considerations and things to keep in mind as you evaluate this proposal, and then some next steps if we choose to make a change, and then there'll be time at the end for questions. So starting off with some data, this is a breakdown, and you have this as a handout which is a little bit bigger just because the type's kind of hard to read on the two per slide. So this is the breakdown of reentry dates for all of our partner districts. So the 22 districts that we serve, as well as the two districts that feed into South Tech that are in Jefferson County, so the Windsor District and the Fox District. So you have the reentry date, and then you also have the model in which they are reentering. If you look at this data, there is a couple pieces. So anything that's in red, that's a district that does not yet have a Board-approved return date. So those districts do not yet have a return date. You're also going to notice a pattern when you look between North and South. Nearly all of the South districts have a return date where many of the North districts do not yet have a return date. You're also going to see a breakdown of number of students. So that's the number of students from that district that attend North Tech or South Tech. So for example, in the North Tech region, you have Hazelwood. 200 of our North Tech students that are half-day come from Hazelwood. Do you want to go to the next slide, Mark? So trends, South, Central, and West County districts are reopening to high school students. Most of them are returning in October, so they returned at the end of October where they have a date for sometime this month to return to in-person learning. North districts mostly remain remote until January. The only two districts for North Tech that did have a reopen date prior to January are Jennings, which began at the beginning of the school year on an alternating schedule, and Pattonville, which came back at the end of October. The most common schedule that we see across the Board is what I have outlined here below. So all students would be virtual on Monday. Group A would be Tuesday, Thursday. Group B would attend on Wednesdays and Fridays in person. Especially if you look at the South Tech side, where many of those districts are in person. Melville, Parkway, Lindbergh, Ashton, and Bayless all have that schedule. That accounts for nearly 80% of our students at South Tech. So nearly 80% of our students, that is the schedule they're currently on in their partner district if they are in person. North Tech, Pattonville is on that schedule. As I mentioned earlier, Pattonville is one of our two districts that is back in session in the North region for in-person learning. Next slide. So family choice data. One asterisk with this data, this data is a little bit old. This is from back when we deployed the survey on October 13th. So families began responding on the 13th, and then we continued to collect responses throughout the month of October. So some of this data is almost a month old. North Tech, to this point, 64% of our families showed that they would attend in person if they were given the option of in-person or virtual. Of that 64%, 83% of those said that they would be using district transportation to get to school and to get home at the end of the day. 17% said the family would provide their own transportation or the student would drive. 36% indicated that they would attend virtually. South Tech, the data is a little bit different. So in-person, 86% of our families that responded indicated their student would attend in-person. District transportation, only 44% indicated they would be using a district school bus. We're 54%, so more than half of our students at South Tech indicated either they would drive themselves or their family would drop them off and pick them up. And then for virtual, 14% indicated that they would come to us virtually as opposed to attending in person. So there are some stark differences between the North Tech data and the South Tech data. North Tech students and families much more reliant on district transportation. North Tech students and families much more likely to choose a virtual option. One piece with transportation on that note, how you saw 83% of North Tech families indicated they'd be using district transportation. I had a meeting with the Transportation Department on Friday of last week. In that meeting, one thing they indicated was, based off the number of drivers and buses they have, if a student is taking a midday route from the tech schools, so let's take one of our highly populous schools, let's take a Hazelwood, like a Hazelwood Central bus is leaving North Tech and taking those students back at the midday, that bus is likely to have two students in every single seat, the entire bus full. So we're on our SSD buses right now. Students are able to socially distance, and we have one student per row. And the tech school buses, because of the number of students that we serve and the number of buses that we'd be operating, they're much more likely to be near or at capacity. In a traditional school year, it's not uncommon for a school like Hazelwood Central or Melville or Oakville to have more than one bus, and every seat in those buses is full. And then potentially having an overflow bus if everyone that rides those buses shows up and takes the bus that day. So it's one thing to keep in mind when you're thinking about district transportation. Partner district feedback. Those that are in person want our students to be back in person. Right now, it's making a logistical challenge for those districts. For example, the Melville district currently is running midday transportation to pick up morning tech students from their homes to get them to Melville for their in-person classes in the afternoon, where normally, they'd start their day at Tech, and then we would transport them to Melville High School. But right now, those students don't have a way to get to their high school, so Melville is running additional buses to get those students in person. By Melville running their own routes, they're running the buses at the time that they can. Oftentimes, those times that those buses are picking students up interfere with the time the student's supposed to be accessing learning at the technical high school. So they're leaving instruction early so they can get on a Melville bus to get back in time for instruction for in-person at their home high school. The other thing we heard loud and clear from our partner districts, if we're going to move to Phase Three, which is the five days a week in person, if we're going to get to that point where students aren't going to have a virtual option, they're going to want to know as soon as possible to make alternative arrangements for those students. So they don't want to have to scramble to build schedules at the end of January to try and figure out how do we accommodate these students. They'd much prefer to know early so they can make the best schedule possible for those students as opposed to giving them whatever is available. Next slide. So this is the proposal. So the first step would be what we consider Phase One, which would be an orientation. Phase One would begin on December 3rd. In the orientation phase, most of our students that are coming to North and South Tech have never been there for an orientation or a registration event. Normally, we'd do that during the summer before the start of the school year. Because of COVID, we were unable to do that. So our sophomores and our juniors, most of them have never been in the building. So we need to take some time to acclimate them to the building, and so we would use those two days, so the 3rd and the 4th of December, as basically one-day orientations to help students acclimate to the building. Many of our partner districts are bringing back freshmen first before they bring back everybody else for this same purpose, to give them a chance to acclimate, see where the entrance is, see how to get to class, kind of become accustomed to some of the processes and procedures. Then we'd move into Phase Two. So Phase Two would be in-person attendance days, and we'd be following that schedule I mentioned earlier of Tuesday, Thursday, or Wednesday, Friday, with an all-virtual Monday. Then there would also be the option in Phase Two for students who did not want to attend in person, where they'd be able to remain 100% virtual. During this phase, as you saw, many of our partner districts in the North region are not yet back in session. In the South region, Maplewood is not yet back. Ladue has not yet announced a formal date. And so for those districts, we would need to provide supplemental transportation for those students because normally, at the midday, we'd either pick the student up from their home high school or we'd drop them back off at their home high school. And then their home high school would get them home at the end of the day. We don't have that luxury if their home high school is still virtual. So instead of dropping a student off at Hazelwood Central or picking them up from Riverview Gardens, we would need to have a community stop where we'd be picking them up or dropping them off. In meeting with transportation, there might be more distance in those stops than what you'd see in a normal school year. Normally, during the midday, for example, at North Tech, they would have 17 buses, and those 17 buses would all head directly to high schools to drop off, then load up, and head back because there's a narrow window of time to do all of this. Instead, we would need those 17 buses potentially to pick up, like in the morning, we'd have 150 students potentially that we need to drop off throughout the community. And so that would take a lot more time than taking everybody to clearly defined destinations. So students may have a farther distance than what they normally would for transportation. Pickup times and drop-off times also might be a little bit different than what we see during a normal school year. Next slide. So then we're proposing going to Phase Three, January 19th. If we want to get to five days a week of in-person instruction at the technical high schools, the cleanest time to do that is at the start of the semester. That way, if a student or family does not want to continue with in-person instruction and they want to return back to the home high school, they can do so, and it won't interfere with the student's ability to earn high school credit. They would roll back at the semester, which is a clean breaking point for most students. So in-person attendance, five days a week, beginning January 19th. We would offer a virtual option for exploration programs as well as programs where certification does not require in-person instruction. We would also offer a virtual option for our full-day North Tech students, even if their program certification requires in-person instruction, to ensure those students have a pathway to graduation. Instead of making a senior, their last semester before graduation, return to a home high school that they potentially haven't been at in two and a half years, we would keep them at North Tech, and we'd put them in an alternative CTE course that could be offered virtually, so we'd make an alternative schedule for those students. Next slide. So this is the breakdown of the programs that would have a virtual option versus would not have a virtual option. So everything on the left-hand side of the screen in gray, those programs, their option would be in-person or return to the home high school. Those programs, the certification offered, requires the student to be in-person. The right-hand side of the screen, these are programs where students would have the option to remain virtual throughout second semester. That if the program offers a certification, they're able to obtain it virtually, or the program is an exploration program that does not result in a specific certification. So that would wind up with having about 257 students who would have a virtual option, and then we'd have about 1,300 students who would have to either choose in-person or go back to their home high school. Next slide. So important considerations. By not offering a virtual option, some students may choose to return back to their home high school, so they would drop the program at North or South Tech. That could result in a drop in enrollment. Based off the survey data that we had back in mid-October, it looks like about 100 North Tech students who want virtual would not have a virtual option at North Tech. So those 100 students would either have to choose in-person or return back to their home high school. And then at South Tech, we have about 60 students who would not have a virtual option. So those 60 students would either have to choose in-person or they would return back to their home high school. or they would return back to their home high school. Excuse me, as I was talking about alternative transportation, some families may be uncomfortable with the alternative transportation options that we're offering. For example, if a student needs to take Metro bus to get to where we identify a community bus stop for the student, a family might be uncomfortable with that. So it's possible that their bus stop might be two or three miles away. So how do they get there? The other thing that might be a concern as well with that alternative transportation is we get into the winter months, depending how far away it is, that might become more challenging for students and families. It's one thing to walk a mile and a half when it's very nice outside. It's another when it's 30 degrees and pretty frigid, especially when our students are getting on the bus in the morning around 6:00 to 6:30. Next slide. So virtual options will need to be predominantly asynchronous or led by a teacher with the availability to support the class. Whether this new proposal is adopted or the initial schedule remains in place, the reentry plan will continue to be revised and updated to ensure student and staff safety. Actually, Mark, if you can go backwards, I think we missed one slide. We missed the staff feedback slide. So go back more.
Several slides.
Right before the proposal. Back one more. All right, so staff feedback. So a couple of notes on staff feedback. I just want to make sure that we get the voice of staff in this conversation as well. So nearly all of our staff did report in-person on October 28th when staff were scheduled to report. By the next week, everybody was there in-person that was scheduled to be in-person. We had a couple of staff on the 28th that still had some childcare issues they needed to work out. The feedback that we hear from our staff about reopening, especially with this new plan of coming back earlier. Last week on Thursday, I did a presentation for all of our staff at North Tech as well as a presentation for all of our staff at South Tech that outlined the same proposal that you're seeing right now, to get their voices a part of the conversation. All staff were given the opportunity, if they had additional feedback they were not able to provide in that meeting, they were invited to email that feedback to me so I could include that as a part of this presentation, my discussion with you this evening. What we heard from our staff. We had a group of our staff who are very excited about the prospect of students returning to in-person instruction. They've heard from their students and families who are struggling with virtual and those students really want that hands-on aspect of the program. It's the reason they chose to enroll in our program in the first place. And so we've got a segment of our families that really want to get in and our instructors that really want them to be there. At the same time, we have a segment of our staff who's still very concerned about the prospect of having students return to face-to-face instruction. As you heard in the public comment tonight, they're concerned about the direction of the COVID statistics in St. Louis County. They feel the numbers are moving in the wrong direction, not the right direction. They're looking at our sending schools and seeing the challenges that a number of them are experiencing, where some of our sending schools have had to shut down buildings or we have sending schools that are slowing down or we're supposed to move from hybrid to five-day-a-week and are choosing to remain hybrid. So that's making our staff nervous. And then the third thing our staff's concerned about is social distancing. In some of our classes, it's going to be very easy to keep students separate. Programs like graphic design, each student has their own clearly defined workspace. Very easy for the student to stay in that clearly defined workspace. But in other programs like construction or auto tech, group work and collaboration is absolutely an essential component of those fields. Students are going to have to be working in close proximity. So the ability to maintain social distance throughout the instruction day, it's going to be limited. Some of our rooms, the floor plan of the room also restricts the ability to social distance. So those are all things that we're hearing from our staff that are really making them concerned about the idea of returning to in-person instruction with students. The last thing we're hearing from our staff, which is why you saw in the proposal, that when we move to Phase 3, most of our students are entirely in-person, that we're not offering a virtual option anymore. Our staff are concerned about being able to effectively support virtual students at the same time as in-person students if they have in-person students five days a week. Most of our programs, there's only one instructor in the content area so that one person would have to support both groups. And in many of our programs, it'd be very difficult to safely supervise those in-person students at the same time you're providing virtual instruction at the exact same time to online students. So that's a universal concern that we have from our staff. All right, Mark, do you want to jump back to the last slide again? Sorry about that jump. So as I mentioned earlier, so talking about those virtual options, for those programs that are offering virtual, it's either going to be a predominantly asynchronous to something that's not done live, which is like what I was talking about for those North Tech full-day students who don't necessarily have a pathway for virtual. We put them in something that's not live. Whereas the other students, we'd have a teacher who'd be able to sign to support them to ensure that they're getting everything they need to be successful in that virtual environment. And then this proposal is going to continue to evolve. The reentry plan will have to continue to evolve as we get new information and continue to revisit it to make sure that we are doing all that we can to keep students and staff safe. So next slide. So next steps. So the ball would be in your court to consider the data and consider the options. If you want to adopt this revised reentry plan, it would need to be done very, very soon so that we have the lead time to get through all the steps that we need to get through. It's going to probably take us a week to a week and a half to survey all of our families to get them to lock into a decision if they're going to do in-person or they're going to continue with the distance learning option. We're going to need to communicate the change to our staff, communicate the change to our families, provide families with a breakdown of what their options and logistics are. Some families have a lot of questions that really relate back to logistics of, what will this look like for my specific student? They're not as concerned about big picture, what does this look like? But what does this look like for me? And then also finalize our family choice options. So any of those families who are reluctant to commit one way or the other, we're really going to have to lean on them to commit because we're going to need to know which way they're going. So if we're going to have students come back at the very beginning of December, we're going to need at least three weeks of lead time to get everything all in order for those students.
To start off, one of the comments that was made, fellow comment, this was something I was thinking about as well, was I think we are using some of those buildings right now for some of our other programs like VSP. How would that affect those programs?
It's a really good question. So the VSP program has a number of classrooms at North Tech and a number of classrooms at South Tech. Currently, they're occupying spaces that when we built our reentry plans for North Tech and South Tech, we were not planning on using those spaces for instruction. For example, at South Tech, because of the potential of classroom groups to interact, we were just not going to use our library. We don't have to use our library space, so that space is going to become a space available for VSP. We also have a couple of classroom spaces that were unoccupied that we were going to leave open, but instead we're going to have VSP classes housed in those spaces. North Tech did have an advantage of with the phasing out of the full-day program, we had a number of classroom spaces become available that otherwise would have been occupied. Our full-day number is down from what it was a year ago. So we've had a number of classroom spaces where we've been able to house the VSP program. North Tech Construction has made that a little bit wonky where they, we would want to have them all kind of clustered together. Instead, they are spread throughout the building. But those programs are housed in our buildings until they can move back to what would be their normal sites. Because we are the alternative site, because right now they can't go to their current site. South Tech, I believe, currently has five VSP sites. And North Tech, I believe, has four VSP sites currently.
Just to clarify those response, it doesn't sound like this would impact those programs.
It wouldn't. And currently, those programs, I mean, the student enrollment is not very high in those programs and they are in very designated spaces.
My question is, when you mentioned earlier about the metro, have you looked at the quality of service that North County has in reference to metro?
So we did look at that. And that was a concern of the reliability of if a student, even if, even if everything times out perfect and the student is everywhere they need to be, it's possible that those buses just are not running on schedule at the time that we need to pick them up. So that's why we're really trying to do everything we can through our Transportation Department to get busing as close to the student as possible, recognizing there's going to be some scenarios where the bus stop is still going to be pretty far away for that student.
And in some cases, even depending upon where the student is coming from, transfers.
Right.
Yeah, I, our bus service is not very good in North County.
And that's where we were even looking at how you have some of those transfer centers where multiple bus lines converge. So like the North Hanley Transfer Center, the Riverview Transfer Center. So we were thinking about maybe even having those be where we pick up or they might be more likely to be on schedule and the student would be less likely to have to change bus lines. Because that's really the big concern of the student has to change multiple buses to get to a location and that really gets concerning.
And as far as time as well in that.
Yeah.
I know that my brother-in-law worked at Walmart four hours several years ago. And what was the 12-minute auto drive to the job became a two-hour ride, five bucks.
And that's a concern we have. The other thing, Dr. Keenan and I last week talked about cabbying as an option as well. And historically, our issues with cabbying have been the same. Cabs are great when they show up on time, but oftentimes, we have a lot of logistical problems with cabs where they just don't show, or they don't show where they're supposed to, or they arrive very early or they arrive late. And so, and they arrive early, the student's not ready for them and they leave.
And then the cost involved in that as well.
Yes. So we're trying to do what's most cost-effective as well as what works best for students and families. And so we're trying to balance all of those pieces. That's why, as our sending schools come back to in-person, some of those logistical challenges will decrease. But right now, in the North region, where most of our high schools are not yet back in session, we're going to have more pressure in that region than we will in South and Central and West.
I have, I have a question, I have some comments first. One of the things is this, while we're basing our opinion on this, we are also basing our opinion on the information that was provided by Sam Page, also provided by Dr. Barza. And it's my understanding that Sam Page is pushing schools to go back.
They're, they're not saying to close schools. And they're, they're wanting to. Right now, they're, basically they're saying, they're recommending having schools open, but also if hybrid models are a better version of that. If they did recommend, if they were going to slowly close schools down, they would start, they feel like their positivity rate at the high school level impacts our higher rates there. So he would say they're recommending hybrid models. Whole lives are thought.
Question I have is on the differences between North Tech and South Tech. When you look at the districts that are open versus not, is there a rationale or a reason for that? And that goes beyond chance.
Yeah, and every district, it's their own decision to choose whether or not they come back. For every district, it's weighing staffing. Do you have the staffing to come back to in-person? What's the community interest and the community will? And if you offer in-person, are students going to sign up and show up? Is it a concern? I mean, you saw it in the breakdown of our data. Where at South Tech, we were at only 14% of our students wanted virtual. But at North Tech, it was over a third of our students were interested in a virtual option. So there's just a geographical difference in mindset where there are pockets of the county that are more concerned about COVID and are more interested in a virtual option. And then other areas where the perception is different.
But it seems like nearly a north-south dividing line.
Yeah.
Also, heavy note, just as a matter of note, this past Sunday in Hazelwood, we pulled all of our hotspots because of difficulties we had in terms of bad hotspots for kids in reference to the units that they had. And so it's interesting you say in the virtual because we've not had that kind of success in the Hazelwood district, even with virtual because of that inability. I said we can provide computers, maybe even internet, hotspots, but we can't provide electricity. And so you have now a situation of where Hazelwood has had to pull as this blast, this past Sunday. They pulled all of their hotspots out of our.
Just sort of ducking in on that, so just so I can understand this important consideration. You have the North Tech students and South Tech students who will not have a virtual option. And why will they not have a virtual option?
So if we move back to five days a week, so let's say that I'm the auto tech instructor. So I've got students in-person five days a week. To be able to do instruction safely in the automotive shop, you're going to have to be directly supervising those students the whole time. So how can I safely supervise those students in the shop setting at the same time I'm running a virtual course for those students who are still at home? So it's the ability to supervise both student populations and ensure those students who choose virtual get the instructor time that they need to be successful. Because what we don't want to do is set those students up for a situation where they're not going to be successful, that we're asking them to teach themselves auto tech independently.
But this is all for, when would that be a week thing be? That wouldn't even be first semester, would it?
That would be in January. So every student would have a pathway to get to the end of first semester. Every student would be able to complete the current semester. Second semester, which will begin after Martin Luther King Day, the student would have to choose, do you continue with, do you want virtual or in-person? Depending on your program, if you want virtual, you may have to go back to your home high school.
What's the possibility of these programs with virtual option? Is there a possibility to put a camera in where you can just livestream whatever that teacher is doing throughout the day?
So great question. So that was something we talked about, but the bright line that we drew was if the program certification requires the student to be in-person to be able to get the certification, then come January, we need that student to pick the in-person option. Otherwise, like let's take health sciences, for example. A student cannot earn CNA certification without being in-person to demonstrate the skills, to practice the skills on another person and then go out to the clinical environment, so the hospital or long-term care facility to practice the skills in a live environment. If the student stays virtual, we can still teach to the best of our ability remotely, but the student would not have that opportunity to earn certification. And so part of the concern we have is if we allow students to stay in those programs virtually, then we get to the end of the year and the student demanding, well, I didn't get certified. Why didn't I get certified? Because you were virtual. If you choose virtual, there's not a way that you can, you can continue with the curriculum, but we can't check all the boxes we need to check for the student to be able to sit for the certification. Same thing with auto tech. You can't sit for ASE certification without actually using the equipment, practicing the skills.
I was talking about the programs with virtual option.
Oh, the programs with virtual option, yeah. Sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, I could see where the programs without virtual option.
Yeah.
You need the hands-on experience.
Yeah, so web and computer programming is a program that really can be done at a distance. So there's a pretty good chance the student would be able to earn that certification in that program. The other programs on that list, most of them are exploratory in nature. And so there isn't necessarily a certification at the end. So the career exploration program, it is what it sounds like. The information technology program, that's an intro to information technology. That's not our web and computer or Cisco networking where there's a set certification those students are going to obtain.
What, I'm trying to figure out how you do what, light duty manufacturing?
Yeah, so light duty manufacturing is an exploration program. And so it doesn't have a set certification the students are going to walk away with besides OSHA, which we can do OSHA remotely.
So those programs, you could have a camera on throughout the day and the individual could still go virtual.
Yeah. Web and, let's take web and computer, for example. At North Tech, we have more students who want to be virtual in web and computer programming than be in-person to the point that if I'm the teacher, I'm going to have my four kids that came in-person log on to Zoom and Zoom along with all their friends at home. Because of my 18 students, 14 of them picked virtual and I only have four in-person. So more students are out of the classroom than in the classroom. So you just continue running it like you are currently where everybody's logging into a Zoom whether you're in-person or you're at home.
I applaud our teachers for being able to do this. This is, it's clearly makes life a lot more difficult.
Most certainly.
Given the fact that you know this information, I'd like to know how many of our classes and what type of classes are students currently showing the most interest or the least interest in?
In virtual or?
The classes of those, the types of classes that we're offering that affects their abilities and their choices to come to North Tech.
So I want to make sure I understand the question you're asking. What are the most high-interest programs? What do we get the most applications in?
Yes.
Yep, so the hot, most high-interest program at both campuses is our health sciences program. That program, both buildings, we have enough of a waitlist where we could probably add two more sections of health sciences. Our biggest limit is being able to get clinical space to be able to take everybody out to support those students and to be able to hire the nurses we need to teach it. After that, it varies a little bit geographically. So in the South region, auto tech is a very high-interest program. Whereas in the North region, construction is a very high-interest program. Both locations, graphic design is a very popular program. And then for the rest of our programs, it does ebb and flow a little bit from year to year. Law enforcement typically is very popular at both campuses. Firefighting is typically popular every year at both campuses. But for the other programs, it ebbs and flows from year to year where some years will have spikes and some years will have dips. Web and computer programming is one in the last two or three years that's become extremely popular. I think more and more students are becoming aware of the IT possibilities in St. Louis County. And so we're seeing an uptick in student interest in that program.
I have two questions. First of all, what's the argument for keeping the plan as, what's part of the logistics?
So sticking with, sticking with until January 19th. So the advantages of sticking with until January 19th, it allows more time for COVID data to start trending back in the right direction. It also gives more time for all of our districts to come back. So while South, Central and West are back, many of our large districts in the North County region are not yet back in-person. So it gives time for Hazelwood. region are not yet back in-person. So, it gives time for Hazelwood and Ferguson Fluorescent to return to in-person instruction. We also have districts like Ritner that have not brought the high school back yet for in-person instruction. So, as, if, if more of our districts are in-person, it's going to create less and less strain on the transportation component. It's going to make that much more equitable for students. Where right now, transportation isn't as much of a factor in south, at South Tech, where you've got more than half your students who are saying they're going to provide their own transportation. But at North Tech, where 83% of your students are saying, "I'm going to be reliant on district transportation," district transportation is going to have to work well for those students to be able to show up every day. So, if we offer in-person instruction that students then are not able to access because of their ability to get to the bus stop, or their ability to catch the bus at the time that they need to, that's going to create a barrier for those students. So, we could offer in-person and then create more ill-will by offering it, but it not working for the student's schedule. The other piece is, we have a couple districts like Rockwood that are offering a different bell schedule than what they normally would for first semester. So, if you're a Rockwood student and you're coming in-person to South Tech, it's possible you could have an academic class taking, happening at the same time you're supposed to be at South Tech. How do you weigh those two? Do you just not show up to Tech? Do you choose virtual for Tech and try and make it work? So, those Rockwood students are going to see some logistical challenges. And any other district that chooses a unique bell schedule, so the ones that have not yet announced when they're returning to in-person, if they do come back, they might come back at a different bell schedule than what they normally use. And those bell schedules can create challenges for students.
So, background from my other question was that when I voted back in October to open the SSD schools sooner than the tech schools, part of the data that was informing that was the differences in student engagement. So, we're getting reports of student engagement for the SSD schools, especially students completing, that 80% of their distance learning activities were much lower in the SSD schools versus the tech schools. Now, Director Faulkner raised the concern that perhaps in some of the different local school districts, there are differences in terms of abilities to access curriculum online. So, I'm curious, do we have data, at the very least broken now between North and South Tech, in terms of student engagement?
So, we do have to see 99% of the students, yeah, completing at least one activity, and 85% of them, 80% of the activities.
Is there a difference in breakdown?
The difference between North and South Tech, because we provided devices, because we provided hotspots, the data between the two buildings is nearly identical. You're going to see fluctuations week to week. The biggest fluctuations that we see are as if partner districts have a PD day, or there were a couple districts that had a fall break in October, and we saw a dip for those students because their academic classes were off, they checked out other tech classes at the same time, which isn't uncommon. We see the same thing happen every year at spring break if we don't line up. But as far as student engagement, it's remained flat. A big advantage that we have at North Tech, prior to the pandemic, we were a one-to-one school, so every full-day North Tech student had a Chromebook already assigned to them, and then they've retained those devices. So, those students have been able to engage from day one pretty easily into their classes, even back in March. So, so we are seeing relatively the same level of engagement, North and South.
I want to go back to what Director Faulkner said. They, if my biggest group of people that comes from Hazelwood, and, Curtis, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm misputting the same, I thought you had said Hazelwood pulled all their hotspots. That would make it much more difficult for, for, for families who didn't have internet to get any type of virtual, wouldn't it?
Yeah. Now, keep in mind, besides devices and internet that's been provided by Hazelwood, North Tech and South Tech have also provided devices and hotspots for students and families.
So, we have still provided.
Yeah.
And in some cases, a student may have gotten it before us, and they ended up not requesting it from the partner district because they already got it from special school district.
Well, you know, and one of the things that we found, that we both, computers themselves and reference to maintenance on the computers, crashing of hotspots when there are multiple kids in the family, you know, it creates a lot of frustration based upon downtime. And everybody tends to just, I mean, from parents to kids, they just get frustrated. And they just have to win, you know? And so, the difficulty we find ourselves facing is getting by, past these particular technical problems that lend themselves to the frustration, that those parents that are trying to do what they hope is going to help them virtually, it's, it's just too much of a hit and miss, in many cases, particularly with multiple children and conditions, living in apartments, different kinds of signal strengths and stuff of that nature, I'm sure come into play, you know? And so, you know, we have the opportunity center, people constantly, we're having double-day, double-day weeks that people can bring their computers back in because they're breaking down, they have to be repaired. So, if we don't have one to give someone while that one's being repaired for that time, and again, you're talking about a blockage of time or frustration. So, it's, it's become a challenge, trying to make virtual work.
Do you, do you see any rationale, do you see a rationale for having North Tech and South Tech different when it comes to being virtual versus not virtual? I mean, if, what if this, what if this was changed for just either North Tech or South Tech?
So, so there, there definitely is a difference in what families are looking for, and there is a difference between what our partner districts have chosen to do as their schedules go. At the same time, it'd be challenging for a student who, let's say, is students in a program like welding, that you really do, after about a quarter of virtual, there, you've covered most of the theory for welding. And at that point, for the student to continue to expand their skills, they're going to have to get into a welding booth and weld. And so, we're going to allow the students at South Tech to come in and get that experience, but then we're not going to allow the student at North Tech to come in and get that experience. And, and I've heard from families from both schools where they have students who previously were excelling in school, and that was because the part of their day that they looked forward to was the technical education component, where they were getting that practical application of learning, where everything else in their day made sense. Math made sense, comarts made sense, science made sense, because all of it feeds into this program that I have an interest in and acumen in. And so, these families are so concerned that they're seeing their students check out of learning because they're not getting that practical application component, that you can only get from the hands-on piece that we offer.
We heard that same statement. It was, it was the same theme. We had the students from robotics here. There were some that said they didn't care about anything. All of a sudden, they got interested in robotics, and math made sense. And all of a sudden, you know, the parents who came out and talked to us afterwards said, "This kid blossomed since this happened."
It's, it's a recurring theme that we hear from our, our families and our students, where it's that all of this connects, and so all of it makes sense. And, but to not have that practical application component, so even though we have students who are doing at least one activity a week, students who are doing 80% of the distance learning plan, that doesn't mean that those students necessarily are excelling academically. For many of the students and the families that I've spoken to that are most frustrated, their concern really is, "My student is just doing the bare minimum to get by. My, my B/C student is now a borderline D student." Because the part of learning that they don't particularly care for is the theory, and what works best in a virtual setting is the theory aspect of what it is that we do. In many of our programs, we've had to change our sequence of the topics that we cover to, "These are the topics that work best for virtual," but those aren't necessarily the best topics for first quarter of first semester, especially for a brand-new student. It's, "These are topics that work best for first quarter of first semester, recognizing we're going to have to do all of it virtually." Some programs do fit better for a virtual setting than others, but some of our programs, it really does become challenging as you near the end of first semester.
So, just from understanding, given the lateness of the semester and the plan to begin January 19th that is currently in place, it sounds like there's really very few days we're going to pick up with in-personal, in-person learning between now and the original plan. Can I correct you on that?
Yeah, so what would end up happening is the student would pick up four days, four weeks of two-day-a-week, and then one week of one-day-a-week. So, they would pick up in total, they would pick up eight, nine days?
Eight or nine days versus our original plan, and this creates transportation difficulties, it sounds like, to deliver nine days incremental. What is the administration's position? Can you tell me?
Yeah. My position, it, it's tough when you look at it from all angles. On the one hand, I absolutely feel for the family where their student is just struggling in a virtual setting, and really wants to get to that hands-on piece as soon as possible. At the same time, there really are some logistical challenges that'll make this difficult. The transportation piece is one that I am concerned about. If, if the desire is to bring back students sooner than January 19th, I believe this is the best way to do it. However, if the desire is not there, and the desire is, you know, we can wait till next semester, then I would say returning January 19th, we may want to look at what January 19th looks like. Do we come back two days a week in January? Right now, we're scheduled to come back one day a week in January, so do we reevaluate what that looks like?
I like that idea better. Coming back stronger in January.
Yeah. At, at the same time, if in second semester, we want to get to the point where we have students there five days a week?
As quickly as possible.
We, we want to make that decision soon, so that partner districts can make a pathway for students who say, "I don't want to come back five days a week in-person."
Yeah, I'm, I'm more inclined to say, "Yes, let's try and get to five days a week ASAP starting January 19th," versus getting nine days in between now and then. But that's my personal.
I agree.
I, I, I think, I, I, we really need them back full-time. And what is this, this nine days, what do you think this nine days gives us?
What it's going to give you is it's going to allow the students to acclimate to their classes a little bit more. It's going to allow them to feel a little bit more connected to their program. Because at this point, again, sophomores and juniors, they haven't even gotten to be in their shop physically. Unless they came to an open house or an event before March, they haven't gotten really into the space. That being said, could that wait till January? It, it probably could. We could make it to the end of the semester, and then we ramp up in second semester. That's an option. It's, it's really, what does the board feel is the best decision for students and families? It, it's tough. This is, this is a very, very difficult piece to weigh.
Should sophomores and juniors who are, who don't have a virtual option, choose to go back to their local school districts? What would happen should they want to then reapply to the tech schools in the following year?
So, sophomores all would still have a virtual option because the sophomore program is an exploratory program. So, all sophomores have the option to remain virtual. That's something that we talked about for juniors. If a junior goes back, that we automatically get, offer them a spot back into their program for the senior class for beginning in August if they wanted to return.
So, they're not going to lose that spot?
Because we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't fill that spot with an outside student. We would just hold that for them, and if the student says, "Yep, you know what? The world has changed. I want to come back," we could bring them back into the senior program.
We also have in the universal summer support program to, to kind of give more of a buffer to, in the summertime, to students that they need to benefit from that in-person, additional certification to, to offer it on the summer side.
And I was thinking about that as well, when you mentioned, for example, the CNA programs, where they may, because they choose, the problem is there will be no virtual instruction, so they couldn't really do anything.
Correct.
Time to.
Yeah, they'd, yeah, they'd have to come in person, yeah.
You know, one of the things that concerns me is the adjustments that we find ourselves as a society making. I have not had a chance to go, for example, here recently to the mall, because a lot of these kids and a lot of people are saying that they don't want to go to work. So, if you go to the mall, they're full. You know, and so, I think at some point in time, what we're facing here is an adjustment that's purposely being made because of all the cautions that we find ourselves trying to take for safety. But at the same time, I said, it's a contradiction to me. I, I was in Charlotte this past weekend, and we stopped through one of the popular malls there. It was absolutely packed. I mean, just packed. And you wouldn't have never thought, though people, many people, of course, were walking with masks, but they still, it's still packed.
Close to each other.
Yeah, they was, you know, the social distancing situation was here, there. But if you were to look at the amount of people that were there, it, it just didn't jive with attitudes that we oftentimes are hearing about, staying apart, social distancing, our fears and stuff. So, I think that some of this has gotten to the point where, you know, we're saying what we don't want to do anymore because we've given, been given the option. And I think that when people are given those options psychologically, and Doc, you guys would know better than me, you're schooled in psychology. So, I think that when those kinds of options come into play, we're always going to pick the easiest one. And if we can work without getting paid, we'll do it. If I don't have to go to school, I'll do it. You know, particularly at certain ages because you're, and, and certain income levels. Much of what we found is, what we're talking about in reference to difference between North and South, some of that is going to come into actually the economic viability of the different communities. Number of people who are hourly employees that may live in North County, one car, transportation again, other car got repossessed, okay? They might have had two, now they got one, so they're down to one. And that one car's got to be used for that person to get back and forth to work. The kid is kind of on his own. This boy, how are they going to get back and forth to school? You know? And so, I think that hopefully, we'll get through this, you know, and we'll come to a point to where, you know, the fear factor will be far less than what it seems to be. But I think that we're, you know, construction, again, I, I see construction workers in my neighborhood, everybody, construction was every place in Charlotte. Nobody was practicing social distancing. Construction workers every place, every time you turn around. And so, I just think that there's a fear factor that we're building ourselves more so, I think, that option. Instead of having, you know, the ability to go in, just like we hear the letters that were written today, nothing that we do is going to always be, you know, accepted because of a have-to anymore. Like, what I don't have to do, more so than what we do have to do.
I do find it interesting that before we decided to reopen our schools, I was getting 35, 40 emails a week that were saying, "Why are you not reopening? This is horrible for our kids. Our kids are having this, this, and this." And then, once we reopened, I began getting, it seemed like every email we got, in fact, every comment we got was for, "By staff, how dare we open?" So, I agree. We're not going to be able to satisfy everyone. And I also began to wonder, are they, are people safer in schools than being outside? You have no controls. I don't have an answer for that.
So, how aggressive of a reopening plan can we have for January 19th? Is that something you could speak to tonight?
So, if we were going to build a reopening plan for January 19th, so we'd still need a little bit of an orientation phase, again, because students haven't been in buildings, period. We would need some time, especially to work out some of the logistics, like at North Tech, where we will be serving lunch and breakfast. It's easier to test that out when you only have half the population in the building as opposed to the full population in the building. So, if we were going to go that direction, we'd still need some time to work through that. So, I'd probably say for the month of January, remain in that phase-two schedule of two days a week, hybrid, to let us get some processes and procedures in place.
Two weeks.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Would that give enough time to get everything done in the semester?
To, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
In other words, I know that there's a certain amount that needs to be done each semester.
Yes.
If you take the first two weeks, you have those, this orientation, or having, I'm not saying there's not any teaching done, but it's mostly finding your way around and making sure that you like the school and all of that, and whoever new people is there, that's all important. But will that give you enough time to complete everything that you need to do?
It, it'll be tight, but at the same time, it would create a pretty clean pathway for students. Because the other thing is, the, the week before, usually that, that, what's now going to be the second week in January, attendance, attendance is usually pretty spotty, because that's going to be the final schedule for our partner districts. And so, it's oftentimes, they do different schedules during finals week, so attendance that week is always pretty light anyway. So, that week, even in this current plan, that week was going to be lightly attended. And so, we'd probably need at least two weeks, maybe three weeks. And so we'd probably need at least two weeks, maybe three weeks of a phased-in entry to get everything settled and get routines and procedures in place before you'd move to a five-day-a-week schedule. At the same time, we need to be able to communicate very clearly upfront to families, we're going to move to five days a week, and when we get there, your options are, if you're in these programs, you don't have a virtual option. So if you're coming back in January...
That has to be told to me.
Yeah.
So could the proposal be to, looking at the calendar now, to keep the Phase 1 on the week of January 19th, and then move to Phase 2 later that week, or the week of January 26th? And then go five days a week in February 2nd?
I was thinking to bring Phase 2 in on the 19th, which is, you know what I'm saying?
When the semester switches.
You said you just wanted that orientation.
Yeah, I still, I think it would still be good to have that orient, because you're going to have, Monday's a holiday. So I think it still would be good the first week just to bring students in for one day each week, and then move to that Phase 2, and then move to, and so you're talking about...
No, Phase 2 would be January 26th.
Yeah.
Yes, sorry. So Phase 2 would be the next week, and Phase 3 would be the week after that.
February 1st is a Monday.
Mm-hmm.
It would still give people enough time to complete all the required things that they need to get done.
Usually have time in the summer, I heard them say, right?
If we have to make up any extended schedules.
I want to, I want to make sure that at the end of this, whoever has, who's applying for certification, passes their certification, because they've had all the stuff.
And keep in mind, I still, I can't guarantee a student's going to pass the test. It's still a credential assessment that the student has to take.
So we have time to...
But as far as preparing the students for them, we can do that. We can absolutely do that.
Do you think we will lose many students because of this?
As I had on the slides earlier, I think at North Tech, there's about 100 students who I would have as question marks, and South Tech, there's about 60 students who are, that have as question marks. I don't know how many of those students' perception and attitude might change come January, it could, especially with other things potentially going on, outside factors that might influence it, of what, what does the county do, is there a vaccine on the way, those types of things. I mean, all that stuff's going to factor in decision-making. But I think that we should prepare for worst-case scenario, that it's possible we could lose those students. One note, South Tech enrollment is actually up. Normally, we lose a chunk of students at the start of the first semester. We didn't lose those students this year. A lot of times, it's when we get some transportation hurdles the first couple of weeks. No one had transportation as a challenge this year because everybody was virtual, so we ended up being up a little bit higher than normal. So if we lose those 60 students, we'll get back to where we were about this time last year. North Tech is the one that would see an enrollment dip if we lost those 100 students. That would be lower than where we were at that time last year.
Kevin, if we have, if we do it on January 19th, will we be having the transportation challenges that we would have if we would go back in earlier?
In the North region, it just depends on what Hazelwood and Ferguson Florissant do. And so because they've not released yet what their plans are, it makes it hard to answer that question. It, it just depends on if those North districts that are currently not, currently do not have a plan for reopening, begin releasing plans for reopening in second semester.
If Hazelwood not, would not have a plan, and they've also taken up their hotspots, we may have an increase, because we may very well have people who want to go back into school.
Mm-hmm.
That's what happened to a lot of the private schools, I mean, their enrollments shot way up when all the schools...
We're just not, at this point, taking new full-day applications. We're, we're teaching out the full-day programs, they would still be doing academics at the home high school.
Any other questions? Discussion?
So is there a motion on there?
Pardon me? Someone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to proceed with reopening the school Phase 1 until January 19th, the rapid transition to Phase 2 the following week, Phase 3 the week after that, February 1st.
And maintain our current plan, because we may have a semester.
So it would be starting in January.
Any discussions on this? Someone, so we're talking, going back to stage, going back to January 19th?
I think, I think where we left things open door was that we were going back on January 19th with an open tent, and discussion to be had about when we would want to proceed further.
And I think that if, once we make a decision to do that, I kind of ascribe to the bill that they were pumped, that those students and parents who are sincerely desirous of having their kids in school and who are sincerely desirous of taking the classes that we're offering, they're going to make that effort. Now, that doesn't mean that we may not find ourselves a couple of weeks in, faced with, you know, a situation. But I think it, it gives us a better barometer, because at least we've got that time to gain some insight that, that we don't get any other way, in reference to who wants to be in school. How many kids want to make that effort? How many parents want to make that effort? You know, and those that don't, there's nothing that you're going to do that's going to make them come anywhere.
I think with this motion, it is the same motion that we had voted on.
It's the same thing we voted on before.
And you're just clarifying it, so it's not changed. What they asked was at the last board meeting by, you know, was to look at what are the possibilities? So I think that we need, I think that that's an important piece of this, that the board requested additional information that Mr. Andrew brought, talked to the staff about. So I think that your decision of the 19th of January is still what you voted on, it's just seller, it's solidifying the Phase 2 and Phase 3 dates.
Right, but this is the same thing we had before.
Yeah. The decision we made before was fundamentally sound.
Right.
There's really, I didn't hear any evidence tonight that would make us think, yes.
Or do we need to make a motion to, so I can say...
To solidify my...
Phase 2 and Phase 3, if that needed? Because those dates have not yet been set.
They have not been set.
Can we make a motion that would solidify that?
I did, second.
Okay, can I just make sure I have it? Is this just for South Tech?
No, this is for North. Go back to the 19th, start.
Phase 1 on the 19th.
Phase 2 on the 26th.
Phase 2, 26th.
Phase 3 on, over.
And the clear communication with, to all parents, to let them know which, which programs could not be attended virtually.
Yeah.
Is there a second for that? Jan, did you second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So I mean, I should do a roll call on this. Can I have a roll call?
Director Asner?
Yes.
Director Faulkner?
Yes.
Director Goodman?
Yes.
President Kuni?
Yes. Let be known that you do a roll call vote, and a roll call vote, and we should have this. All right. With that, calendar events, I'd recommend everyone greet. We already have our next meeting set, so we don't...
No, yeah, we have it set for December 8th.
December 8th?
Yeah. And then we'll have to vote for December 15th, personally?
Yeah, we'll have to on that date, because...
But we're not having a close session?
No.
No, and you're retrieved. Yeah, yeah.
All we need, all we need to do is December 8th.
Okay, do I have a motion? To adjourn, are we ready to adjourn?
Oh, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving in between time.
I'll move adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.